Without helmets on.
Yeah, I got no helmet on.
Seven o'clock, I'll call and give you the order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to take a motion to, we're going to scratch executive session from the agenda. We won't leave that tonight. So with that change, I would entertain a motion to approve the revised agenda.
I will.
Motion in a second. Discussion of questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the minutes of the August 5th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve them?
Have a second.
Motion, have a second. Discussion of questions about the minutes. Got a motion in a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the claims, bills in between, seventy-five thousand nine thirty-nine forty-five. Do I have a motion to approve them? So move. Motion in a second. Questions or discussion on the bills in between?
I have just questions, seventy thousand, that's one paying period, is that right?
Yes.
Why are we paying border states paving seven hundred and fifty dollar water deposit free?
Whenever a construction company comes in and puts up a seven hundred and fifty dollar meter deposit for the meter that sits on the fire hydrant while they're holding trucks for their construction project. That's a meter deposit until they return the meter and then we return the refund.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the bills in between? Got a motion, have a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the current claim, sixty-seven thousand three fifty thirty-four. Do I have a motion to approve them?
So move.
Second.
Motion or a second. Discussion of questions on the group claims.
I got a couple. We ordered swimsuits at the plunge in June. We got a bill in June twenty-eighth of two thousand thirteen. Why are we just now paying it?
I can't answer that. We probably just got it.
Hey.
You know Debbie?
They need to turn it in, I guess. Got to turn it in.
Yeah, we didn't have it at City Hall until just recently, I guess.
Is this the first time we've ordered? That's what I thought.
What, this here? Well, they ordered in June, so it couldn't have been. We never bought till July.
It's the second one that they've done.
Since we've owned it.
We've done, we've done two orders, but that's the first invoice that came for the first order.
This is just the first one.
I have a question too. As far as going to pay, as far as Sam's public route, do we pay? We're paying just mileage on that or what is that?
We're paying employee time to go up there as well as mileage, yes.
But is there any chance we can do some of that here? Would it be cheaper rather than paying membership fee and all that other?
We have a membership fee because of the golf course and...
Can we combine with golf course or something like that?
We need to sit down and have that discussion, yes.
That would be an awful lot.
That was on my list too. The golf course, she goes up in her own private time. But if these people at the plunge would put their order in and call them, they'd have it ready for them. All they had to do is go pick it up. They'd load it and everything. It wouldn't take two employees like it has been.
My concern is that if we could actually get one here, it would benefit both our community and save on all that.
What kind of page are you on?
On page seven. It's at the bottom of this first one on travel time to Sam's public. Then there's one on the second page, page eight.
I've had those same questions, Emily, and I don't think that they can put the orders together for you anymore. Maybe they do, but she didn't think so.
They used to.
Yeah, I know they used to.
They don't do it.
I don't think so. I'll ask her again to make sure.
We spent like almost three thousand dollars on stuff that we could possibly get. I mean cleaning supplies, I don't know why any of that can't even be purchased here from some of our stores. Sometimes I know big, bold stuff is harder, but that's all I have.
I know the water department goes up to at least one of them.
So there's more than one strip that we're only, there's I-3.
Water department go close, Sam's public. They go right by it.
They go right by it.
The other question I got is on a tire we bought from Maverick Tire. Is that called Maverick? Three hundred ninety-two sixty-seven and paid them twenty-five dollars to keep the tire.
What stage are you on?
I don't know, nope. I looked at the invoice today at City Hall.
You always pay for disposal, don't you?
Well, why not haul it out to our landfill and take it over and take three tires to town?
Our normal procedure is to hold all of our tires on site. That's why we have a restricted use site, so we can hold our own motor oil and our own tires until we have the, you know, at least once a year, they do a free tire dunk. And we just haul them all over one time, or at least that's what the history's been in the last couple of years.
Why didn't we buy a tire from someplace in Rapid, get it under state bid and have our own mechanic changes?
What was the tire for?
Something in the sewer line tire. I think the tractor.
It's on page six, third one up from the bottom. Maverick Tire and Auto. Think it was the sewer department purchased it. Or corrections, the utility department.
I think it was on the tractor.
The tire was six hundred and seventy-four dollars in round numbers. Tube was seventy dollars.
What size, what size tire are we talking about? Is this a big tractor tire?
It's a tractor tire, yeah.
The backside?
It's an eighteen point four dash thirty-four eighth ply.
Which we could have bought on the state bid someplace in Rapid.
Did you find out how much?
No, I didn't. But they buy all the cop car tires and stuff up there and save enough money that they don't have to buy them in town. They said, well, tractor tire, they could that do.
We'll look at that, Craig. I did not look at that. That's all I have.
I have a question on the wristbands, MedTech admission wristbands. What was that for?
Those are for the plunge. It's the little tags that they put on when you enter and pay for your admission at the plunge. And then they sort of make it, you know, all day.
Come and go.
For all day, they can come and go.
Okay, thank you.
How many was that?
Oh, a bunch. It's enough to last a while.
Ten thousand?
No, it's like ten thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say at least five for six dollars. Five hundred for color and that was...
I think she buys a week worth of color, so she rotates, you know, each day. So you can't, it's a different tag for each day. Gets up there and there's a thousand per day, so it's gotta be seventy thousand, sure.
Got a motion in a second on the current claim. Any other discussion of questions? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And communications from the public, Don.
Thanks for having me again. It's been important for us to keep this a transparent event with all your help on moving around. This is the near final financial event. On the event. We're always glad to see you come by. Always good to be here with all of you. I'll give you this look over. It was not a financial or huge event for us, but honoring our heroes. Although to evaluate it, I don't want to get my back taken. To evaluate it properly, I think firstly, I have to decide the way I decided. Was there any fatalities during the event? If you think about it, there's a lot of high-speed stuff. There was a lot of things going on, a lot of movements, a lot of wall building, things like that. There were no fatalities or injuries during the entire event. My next thought was, how did the city, how did it go with these citizens? As far as the people in the city, right? Which you all well know, in this city, we have a very diversified group of people. I have yet to hear anybody say it was not a good event. I'm not having one person come up to me and say, "That event was not worth it." Everybody's come up with positive comments. So with that, my evaluation is that it probably was a pretty good event. We had a lot of people at the wall. There's a lot of things happened. My team, which you, of course I have my wife. We have Kim, my right arm. We have Carol. She was on my left arm. And we have Ray and Shatzy who did the group. And I'm gonna let them speak if they wish to. We had a great team we put together. I think it was a pretty good event. I'm gonna let Ray talk about the parade, but it was the largest legal parade in the history of... But it was here, it was a good parade. We almost had more people in the parade than we had watching the parade. And that was very positive. Everything come off very timely. It happened while it's hard to happen. The support we received, sky over, okay? Everything I asked for from the city was on time, perfect, no questions, nothing went wrong. Everything was just great from the police on down. There was absolutely not one thing that you promised to give me that you did not give me that did not go up for. And there was a lot of things to look at, everything that happened. And for that, everybody in the city, they're working. We did our best. That don't happen often, okay? So in that respect, it was a great event. You look at the other support we had throughout the community. I'm talking about newspapers in New Orleans, supposed to. They've acted, they had all the right articles in the right places at the right time. Was it large? I think it was pretty big. Was it as big as it could have been? No. There's a lot of reasons for that. I don't even know what they're... But my evaluation on the event was, we had a great event for the city. Everybody in the city appreciated the event. Everybody that wanted to see it went and saw it. And everybody had a positive in some way, shape or form comment about all the events that happened. I haven't talked with shopkeepers, I was wondering if it was worth it economically. But our evaluation is, from the team, that it went very well. And it showed the community coming together once again and doing a great thing. And for me, it was just great. I do have, we do have a comment, I'll make that when my team member will speak. It has been said prior that you might want to do this again next year. That I'm gonna leave it to you. I'll tell you this, that if you let me know before the end of the month, I'll do it again. If you want me to do it. If not, you probably have to find somebody to do it in two or three years. It's a lot of work. It's hard to get a good team like I have put together with all the knowledge and stuff. So if you need it next year, that's your call. We can do that. I think, I think we'll be a lot smarter next year. I don't think we'd have so many pull parts. I know we're like the last minute flowers. There's some things we did that probably didn't turn out really well. But that's really not true. No one had a problem finding a place to hold that, or one flower down the block. So the things we did wrong, weren't wrong, wrong, they were just overdone. So in all aspects of my mind, it was a great exercise. It was a way for the community to come together and everybody get something out of it. So I think for our community, it was a huge success.
Can I pick up the prayer? Don't take credit away from what a wonderful event was. Whether we had ten thousand people here or not, it was very, very nice. You know, that parade, we had people crying in that parade just because of the people. And it was a very nice thing. It was a very nice thing. The city looked beautiful. We had an awesome view of the rain, but our town has never looked better. Don't discount your efforts and how many people attended the community.
I do, I want to thank you guys personally on behalf of supporting us in the honor and our heroes event.
It, in my opinion, was a success as well. We worked our butts off, many long days, eighteen hour days, sometimes plus. But the ones that have not had any recognition are the city employees. They busted their butts, they cleaned up that river walk. I mean that, by far, I'm a native of here, and that is what that's ever looked. I personally call them, to thank them individually. You guys got a great crew working for it. Billy, Bart, they've worked their butts off. So I want you guys to know that. We recognize it. People coming in from all over the country recognize it as well. I told Don, I'd be his right hand, his wingman anytime on an event like this. I did see the city and community come together in a way that I personally haven't seen. And numbers, Don, don't mean nothing. I mean, we changed, even if it was one person's life that we were able to put closure on, which we all, I myself take it for granted too, the freedom that we have. It's those guys, they'll have picked eight thousand years on that wall. That's why we're here. So I'll do it again, if the city's willing. You know, I think we just need to do more positive things. Before I even pass it over, I need to make a long overdue thank you on behalf of my couple of events, the Code Mudrun and Black Hills Cover Run. I want to thank you guys. I've been so busy with supporting other things. I have flatly a long thank you overdue, so I want to thank all of you guys for supporting that as well. We're just trying to bring positive things in this community. And I hope you'll continue to support, you know, all of us that are gung ho about getting things done in this community, whether somebody's intended to go overboard or not, you know? So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kim.
Carol says, I'm the treasurer, so obviously it did turn out real well on that. If you have any questions, I can answer those, otherwise I'll turn it over.
I want to thank you all on the help with the parade. I sort of screwed up, but thank God we had a second plan, here's Plan B. So it worked out great, but I've never seen a town come together. That Wednesday, for me, it was perfect. And one of the things that I would like to just mention about having this next year. Unfortunately, we have politicians in Washington DC that keep saying they're gonna make a decision right away and they never do. And I don't think the decision on the VA is gonna be made before the election next year. I really don't, because they drag their feet on everything. So I just think it'd be a good idea if we could do it again, just to keep the pressure on them, showing how much we are for the veterans and this is a veterans' town. Thank you.
We do appreciate all the work that was done. It was a great event. We want to thank Don and the whole group.
And in closing, I'll be taking down the flags off the freedom lawn. And then you can make a decision what you would like to do with it. Some of the kids are taking, not just sticking the ground and freighting. So we will collect those up and then we can talk about what you'd like to do with it. That's the property of the group.
Is there any reason why we couldn't answer their question now?
We got budget time coming up this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. That's the time to put the money in the budget for it. You got, you got the list there, and you can make a decision, okay? I think they were great, but there's a certain liability on my part, because we put them up there. Actually, you put them up there with their white flags and poles. When something happens, you know, even though what's happening now is you're sticking them out and sticking them in the ground.
I think he was talking about an event next year.
He talked about the event next year, Don.
Okay.
I'd like personally to see it as a contingent group.
I think that would be a great idea, and quite seriously, I'm gonna pitch it one more time and then sit down and quiet. I think it was great for the city. It was hard for me, it was hard for everybody who was involved in it, but it was worthy just for the one or two people that we were able to help get through it. And some of those people in the city, you know, that have never done anything to do that. It shows what this city is. It educates our children, and our kids are all really popular.
This is the veterans.
I want to tell you, I worked for the federal government, so I had an opportunity to go to Washington DC and I saw the real wall. And I looked on that wall for friends of mine from Illinois that died. I couldn't find them. I still haven't found them. From when I grew up, kids I grew up with in South Chicago. But my wife went and looked at that wall and she was extremely touched. She cried about it when she came home. So that's how much it touched other people in this town.
Thank you all again, and I can't thank the people of this city for what, the city employees did. I'm serious, I was surprised. A lot of things happened, moving, moving things, getting them in, the golf carts. Stuck those golf carts, and that was just a sideboard, but without those golf carts, it would never have happened. I mean, that was huge. And please pass that to the golf courses. That was a huge thing for us. Now, just little stuff, all the home care people, we were very... The city is a wonderful city. A lot of things can be said, but this is an example of what this city can do. And they do it well.
Thank you, Don.
Next on the agenda, ordinance.
You know, I just read the paper about that bicycle helmet ordinance that was passed. And I'm trying to understand what city council, why they're voting on a bicycle ordinance, a helmet law that's... Ordinance or law, I guess you could look at either way, I guess. But I'm trying to understand why, why it is that you guys think you have more to say so than the parents themselves of what their children should do for safety and for not being safe. I mean, that's, that's a liberty you guys are trying to take away. And I'm trying to understand what brought it on, why you even, why you even did that. Can somebody answer that?
I'll give you an answer, one of the feelings anyway. We're asking them not to ride their skateboards or their bicycles on the sidewalk. People coming out of stores and restaurants have been deemed as they're driving by on their bicycles and so forth. So we're asking them not to do so. And doing that, we're putting them onto the street. And we do not have a bike lane as of yet. In the future, we hope to have one, and the plan's coming up. So we're actually pushing them off into another dangerous area. So in doing so, we feel that a helmet, that having a helmet for them for their safety is a good thing.
And you think that that is your job to make the child safe and not the parent's job?
I just take what I do seriously. My point, that was what I thought would be best. I didn't say I'm taking anybody's parenting job away.
Well, you are.
Well, if you take it that way, that's your personal feeling.
Well, well, I'm just trying, that, that is my personal feeling.
I can argue with you on that part.
I can say, Martin, whether all of us agreed with it or not, nobody came in here. There are three week readings to every ordinance or boards passed. And everybody has an opportunity to come in here and voice their opinions on those ordinances. And those things can be taken out or added before it's finalized, but we had no resistance to anything in that ordinance.
And also in those same readings, how many people came in and said, "That's the most wonderful thing you ever did for a child"? How many people came in and said that?
About to say, many guys came in and complained about it.
Yeah.
Exactly. So you guys thought that you knew better than not hearing anything from a parent? How many of you guys are parents of sixteen-year-old or younger children?
I've got three daughters.
Sixteen-year-old or younger at this present time? How many people are?
Why does that matter at this present time?
I've got grandsons.
You all got kids. And we've raised them from little to adults.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what a helmet law has to do with city councilmen and explaining the other side of it, and I'm...
The child's safety is the issue.
I understand child's safety.
If we're putting them out on the street and they get knocked off their bike, it's better that they have that helmet on than to have a fractured skull. That's, that's why I voted for that.
I always thought there was an ordinance against riding on the sidewalk anyway. There was not. There always was. So why there wasn't that, just enforced to do that instead of having a helmet? Because you think you have to have the helmet law because you kick them out on the street?
I mean, you know as well as I do, it's hardly enforced. And reviewing all the old stuff, and we do leave stuff from, love the ordinances and the bicycles. But by pushing them and wanting it enforced and pushing them off onto the street without having a bike lane, we honestly felt that it'd be a good thing for them to have a helmet on.
That's one of the reasons why we have three hearings on it. If people have something to say with regard to an ordinance and they know that it's coming, come forward with what you've got to say.
I just explained to you, I just read the paper and I understood that. This is when I first found out about any ordinance. I am at fault for not being down here and raising heck with it, because I think it's taking liberties away from parents. And you guys are taking that from people. We have enough of that in our big government. I don't believe we need it in small-town government, Hot Springs, South Dakota. But that's my opinion. But if nobody else came in and said, "Boy, that's a wonderful thing to do", then perhaps people should pick up the phone and call somebody that has a child and ask them that. I mean, you know, Craig Rome, you called me up and asked me if you could put your sign in front of my house, but you never called me to ask me what I thought about ordinance has to do with children. And you know I have a child. I mean, just because nobody called to complain, that doesn't make it right.
There are people sitting in this audience at every city council meeting and not one person sitting out here had anything negative to say about it.
Not one person had positive to say about it? You just told me that, so there you go. It's even even, nobody, nobody, nobody.
Ma'am?
Chris, can you have something to?
I do, I have actually a lot of things. But Bobby's had her hand in the air forever, so maybe we should call him Bobby real quick. I just have a question. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct me if I'm wrong. The ordinance of not riding is in the business district, correct?
Right.
So why do we have to have helmets on children everywhere else? Why do I have to have a helmet on my child, on my sidewalk in front of my house if I so choose not to? There's a difference there.
Right.
Yes, business district, I understand, you're on a highway, but why everywhere else?
How would you enforce it otherwise?
If you're in the business, how are you enforcing that riding on a sidewalk in the business district? You're in the business district. You can't ride on the sidewalk. If you're not in the business district, it must be okay. So if you're not in the business district, then why do you have to have a helmet on? Same thing.
It's called consistency.
Well, then why don't you make it so you can't ride on a sidewalk anywhere in town? That would be consistent with that law.
Okay, we can do that.
Well, that's what my...
I just read the article in the paper. This is just downtown on the main business district where the helmet...
That's where they're actually enforcing it because this is where we've had the problems of people getting knocked over coming out of stores.
That's where they're enforcing, that's where the law states you cannot ride on the sidewalk.
The helmet laws.
The helmet law is everywhere.
Change it.
Helmet laws everywhere for bicycles and skateboards. So do you have signs? You can post one at City Hall, right there, walking to Hot Springs, put your helmet on if you're sixteen or younger? I mean, I understand if it's a skate park thing or if it's a downtown thing, but geez, man. Kids have been riding bicycles and, you know, special bicycles and skateboards for a hundred years. You guys all of a sudden take the liberty to just say, "Hey, man, no more in Hot Springs, your child can't do it."
You didn't say you can't do it with a bicycle or skateboard.
You said you can't do it without a helmet. Where's the...
How's that stopping you? How's that stopping you from doing it?
It's not stopping you from riding the bicycle. You're not seeing the liberties you're taking from people.
No, I'm not. Not when I'm talking about child's safety, no. I don't...
Dave, can I say something? I called you guys on, what was it, Monday? And I've been out for a wedding in Oklahoma, so I was not unable to check with other communities to see what their city ordinances were with the skateboarding and biking, et cetera. But given, okay, my son Tyler, he's a skater. This is how he gets to work. I explained that to you guys earlier at the safety meeting. And I wish I would for him, but I literally pulled him from Oklahoma just before this meeting. South Dakota's rated number one for worst teenage drivers. I explained this to a few of you. I don't want my son to be a statistic, so he skateboards. He's physically active, he's not harming anybody, he has never hit anybody skating down there. I understand you guys taking away from business district, so now he does the Freedom Trail because he was the first child to get pulled over on a skateboard by a law enforcement officer because he was told that city council is coming down on the officers to enforce it. My son was the one that got popped with at first. Okay? He had a little, was like, "What a blanket for this, nobody knew about that ordinance." I come to these city council meetings. I was never informed of it in April, never once that that was going to be on the agenda in the newspaper that which you guys were going to do. Never. Sixteen years old, I've taken him to professional skateboarders all around. The only kind they wear their skateboards, their helmets, is when they're competing, not when they're out skating and just frolicking, having fun, not harming anybody. So is there anything, that's what I asked earlier, is there anything that we can do as a parent? Because my son's had three broken bones. I mean, I've got over $10,000 worth of medical bills I've paid because my son chooses a high-impact sport. I'm a parent, he's not being defiant because I bought a helmet. Sixteen-year-old boys do not want to go around with a helmet on their head skating. They just don't. They're hot, they're sweaty, you're out, you don't have nothing covering those kids up at skate park. You haven't improved that skate park. I mean, it's hot. You go out there skating in jeans, because you don't skate in shorts. You don't dare do it. It's a safety issue if you're skating in just shorts. So they're hot and then you're going to put a helmet on top of them and tell the sixteen-year-old boy, "Gotta wear a helmet?" I mean, there's a lot of different issues here. And it's taking away my right.
If we do revisit this ordinance, I will stick to kids wearing helmets at their skate park.
You just told me wearing pants is a safety issue.
No, because, you know, do you know?
Yeah, I know what you're saying, so they don't get all scraped up, they gotta wear pants and it's hot. Well, isn't protecting your head a safety issue?
You know, these guys know how to fall. I mean, when they're out skating...
They're also skating on these streets that the worst...
Okay, but okay, let's keep it on the business district, but not out where they're just being kids.
I just can't understand why people don't want to protect their kids.
I want my child safe. It's not that. It's not that at all. Don't tell me that I'm not trying to protect my child.
There's nothing wrong. I understand what you're saying about the, I absolutely understand that.
Did you vote for this thing?
Yes, I did.
Then you don't...
Because there was no opposition to it.
You don't understand.
Because we weren't aware of it.
There is opposition here today.
But it's done.
Lyle, what can we do to change it?
I mean, Kristen called me and explained the same thing that you're saying to me, Martin, and I did the same thing that I told you. I had no resistance to it, so I had no reason not to vote for it.
You had no motive either. So you just voted for it because I'm trying to understand, why did you vote for that? It's taken individualism away from people. You guys, this is not city government. You guys...
If you really feel that way, you can start a petition to have that ordinance changed.
That's not, I mean, can you revise it? It's not different or it has to stay exactly the way it is?
So, and when this is the first time...
We can revisit this. We can do that.
If we do a petition, then that's going to go on a ballot and that's going to cost a lot of money. Otherwise, you guys could revisit it and let people be heard.
And if we, if you came in here with Neil Fuller's signatures that said they didn't want it...
How many do we need?
It don't have to go on the ballot. If you just brought it into City Hall, we don't have that stop sign down there.
Yeah.
So how many signatures do we need?
All you can give.
There's no certain number unless it's an official petition.
But if we get 100 signatures, is that enough? Or if we get 500 signatures, are you going to...
All you can give is...
I want a number. So that we're not saying that's not enough.
Well, we're not going to say that's not enough. If you can give people that says that they want this changed, we'll revisit it.
And right now, we're here in five...
Because obviously, this is the only discussion you guys have had from the public because nobody came in to say yes, nobody came in to say no until it's too late, so...
And the reason that is, is because the ordinances never make the front page until it's an issue that's not enforced. Nobody reads the public notices, nobody reads the ordinances in the thing. And it's all of our fault, we should read it, but nobody has the time to read it. When it makes the front page, you're like, "Holy cow, look what I got to do now. Somebody took my rights away as a parent because you're making me put a helmet on my kid." What we choose to do with our kids is none of your guys' business or choice. And if you're talking about the safety issue, you brought up, you know, Kim was like, "They wear pants, that's a safety issue." You can bring in as the plunge, and you're going to require everybody under 16 of our life vests, which in fact, my six-year-old could swim laps around any of us in here. So where do you draw the line? The line has to be drawn somewhere of, and you are taking parents' rights away. You're taking my ability. I've got a 10-year-old sitting at home right now who has not ridden her bike because she does not understand why you're requiring her to do something that I don't find that big of a deal. My kids have the skills to ride their bikes without crashing into stuff. My kids have the skills to swim without drowning. I've taught them correctly. So you've got a few kids out there that you're worried about and we all get punished? I have a really hard time with that. I'm their parent, you are not. I've got a six-year-old who just wants to ride to grandma's house. And for my family to implement and abide by these laws that, and I agree with Marty, all of a sudden, because I don't read the ordinances, I don't read the minutes, I'm sorry, I'm going to now because I've learned my lesson there, they should be on the front page, but for my family to implement, it is going to cost me 130 bucks plus to outfit three kids with helmets, which is money I can't spend here because there's not helmets in the correct size, they don't have the correct color. I mean, there's just an array of stuff that wasn't thought about for us to implement. What about the low-income families? You're going to be nabbing them, giving them tickets because they can't afford a sport that should be promoted. You're pushing kids into the house because, "Well, I can't ride my bike now, I don't want to wear a helmet, so I'm not going to ride it. I can't go to grandma's, so I'll drive my car there." You know, you're, it didn't, there was, and I hate to say it this way, but there wasn't a lot of thought put into how it was going to affect the parents. You're giving battle to parents of teenagers, which luckily, I'm not there, but they don't need one more thing to battle about. There are plenty of wars to have and a helmet is not one of them. If you wanted a helmet in the business district because you are pushing them onto a state highway, fine, do it in the business district. But you've got to implement some signs and you can't take the right away on my, you know, not-so-busy street where they can't ride up and down the street without a helmet. They can't...
Without sidewalks.
Yeah, which we don't have sidewalks anyway, so they've always rode in the street.
Okay, thanks. Christian, a bit more patient.
I see what's going on here. It's a principle, guys, it's the principle that you guys are taking these rights away from parents. You guys are, you guys are reminding me of the federal government who are taking the rights away of us every day. It's like the federal government going into the lunchroom and telling the kid, "They can't eat that lunch if their parents pack." Let me tell you something, the school ones sucked. And another thing, I think you guys could have done a lot more better job on Honor Year Heroes Committee. We have servicemen right now from Hot Springs that are in our military right now, like Kevin Holmes, he's one of them, my sister's one of them. Why couldn't we have somehow worked with the state government or the federal government to bring those boys home and honor them? I'm sorry, but I think it's time that the city, that we clean house, except for Wes Grant. I respect him. So right now, I'm letting you guys know, I'm announcing my candidacy, Steve, for Ward One of Hot Springs. And I will be behind these people 100% because I understand. It's the principle, you guys are taking people's rights away and you guys remind me of the federal government. We don't need to have that here. Once you guys see what's going on, what's going on in federal government, state government, now our local government is taking people's rights away, that is not cool. I will be behind these people 100%.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Good night. I'm not for nor against, but I guess what I'm going to ask is if some of you guys would come to the public safety and kind of help figure something out like that skateboarding park, because that really is the sticking issue on this helmet deal for us, the city, releasing our liability. And maybe you guys got an answer for it, maybe you don't, but that is going to be the sticking point, I guarantee you, is that skateboarding park.
One of the things I had to ask for was for a number. We have a population of 3,700-plus people that live in the city. Let's take 15% of that and bring that many to us.
How many school-aged kids do you have?
10% of school-aged kids.
Your senior citizen population always hard to...
Yeah.
That's unfair.
I'm just asking for your guys' input. At a meeting, so maybe they can kind of figure something out, kind of buffer this.
Can I ask something on your meeting note? Do you guys still meet during the day?
Yes, it is.
That's the problem.
That's, you know, that's the problem. The people that work nine to five or eight to five or whatever can't make it to any of the meetings because they're always in the middle of the day.
I have a suggestion. If you guys get together and go after some signatures, try to put some time with your petition or whatever you call it early, so you know what parts of the ordinance you don't like and what parts you do like and what, you make recommendations for changes instead of just saying you don't like it. That would help the council and the Public Safety Committee a lot. Be specific, look at the ordinance, will help if we have to, or I will, to look at any part or parts of it. But if you're specific, the council could sure take a better look at an ordinance that's more responsive to what you want.
You could also be nice with your webpage if the webpage was used for that stuff. I know you guys don't have ordinances on it and stuff now because you guys are, as you change it and things like that, but you know, every meeting you say, "If anybody wants a copy of this first reading," or remember, you know, Kurt, I believe, put some in the paper, but I'd say a lot of people are reading. And you say, "Go to City Hall." People don't want to go to City Hall. You guys spend a lot of money for this webpage that is not being utilized at all.
The Facebook page is awesome. They have a Facebook page and I, yeah, which is nice. They've been putting everything on there.
You said you have all your ordinances and everything on it? And you waited almost a year before that was up there.
Trust me, there's no one more disappointed than Leon and Alan.
No, and I know, and I'm just saying that that's one more avenue to help get notice out to people way in advance before...
Yeah, we realize that, that's why we did it.
And you know what, to what Donna's saying as far as look at the things you like and the things you don't like, those are the things that you're supposed to be doing during the three readings of that ordinance. And I understand not everybody here reads every ordinance. I don't, you know, or never did before until I got on here and now I have to. But I guess what I'm saying is you're criticizing us for doing something that nobody gave us any resistance to.
Well, one was the way you were doing it.
Marty had a point too, though. I mean, you asked, when you pointed Craig out, you asked to put a sign in front. Well, you, I mean, we all know each other. You know who has kids and maybe it could be an extra step that you guys take and say, "Hey, this is going to affect your guys' lives, what do you think about this?" Maybe you weren't paying attention, you know? And maybe to go above and beyond, I don't know if that's above and beyond, but just to bring it to notice.
Like you say, we all know people. I thought Marty lived up above and beyond. I really did. But as far as the petition, if you guys get a petition together and want to have a meeting in the evening, I'm sure Dave and I could set something up in the evening, meet with any, put this, just let us know.
If we can help you, let me know, or if I can, I will be happy to do specifics.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
So is this petition just to city people? Because according to your ordinance, it says that anybody that uses these, the past streets or highways within city has to abide by all these rules. So this petition ought to be for not just the people within the city limits. Because I have kids that ride bicycles in town, we don't live in town, so...
The way I look at it, since it's not a referendum or an initiative, it doesn't have to be city-only, the people that it affects should be the people that have some input. If it ever would come to a vote, though, you wouldn't get to vote, it'd only be the people in the city. But I think anybody could sign it.
I don't live in the city, but I'd like to make a recommendation to the council for consideration after school year starts. You should have a child on the school, nominated from the school, sit on this board and advise you on issue. Be very, as you do, be great for the school, it's great for the child that did that and it gives you another avenue to understand what's at risk. Just a thought for the future and I think it would be good for the community. It's just a thought. And that would, that would get the word out to the parents.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to continue on. Golf course maintenance, Dr. Don, you've got some questions on, I think, or any questions?
I just, why wasn't the building completed to the specs? I understand it's not completed and paid for. Specifically on the heating. Specifically on the heating side. And that's what that sheet I gave you reflects.
Right, you've got, what was advertised and the way it was asked?
Yeah, I think the heater change is not a big deal. As you can see, they're comparable. It's just the completion of the venting and the combustion error, which the Resnar people from Respec tell me it's a very important aspect of this building when I talked to him on Thursday.
Well, the other manufacturers tell you that they don't recommend hooking it up?
The engineer said, Wes...
They're not done with the landfill at this point, are they?
Has to do with the construction of the building, has to do with the number of air changes that take place in the building, has to do with the operation of the building, has to do with the operation of the building, how often the doors are opened and closed. That building out there in the winter will not be a situation, the doors will be open and closed, it'll be shut down. It's gonna take one-third the capacity of the heating equipment put in there to heat up the air change that comes into that building every hour, just for combustion. Lack of oxygen creates incomplete combustion. These heaters can be operated at a max of 80% efficiency. Without proper combustion error, they won't do that.
Roy Powell, billing over, has exactly.
I'm not talking about that, Wes! We sat down with this, we sat down with this, it's in the specs.
Did you call Sunstar and talk to their?
Wes, it's in the specs. You guys didn't complete the specs. You never had a change already, you didn't complete the specs. Well, I'm asking why? I'm not gonna get into arguing about heat loss and all that. But I'm just asking why it wasn't completed? You insisted on the vents being three foot outside the building in that meeting. We got one at one foot and one at 30 inches.
And I went and looked at it today, and I agree with you on that aspect.
It was paid for. And the air combustion is not put into it.
Why isn't the trim done? Why isn't the rest of the building done, Don?
That was all volunteers, Wes. And why isn't the water done? And why haven't the city fulfilled their obligation to the developer up there to be out of those buildings?
I don't know what you're asking. Me and Craig have been asking that. You guys had to have this building built early in the spring and had all this stuff rushed through, and now all of a sudden.
We can't get you guys to approve a bit or a water line or a septic system up there.
Don't say you guys, because you don't know.
It's a council, Wes. You guys control everything till something's wrong and you don't want nothing to do with it. I wanted to know why the building heating system was paid for and it wasn't completed to the specifications. Period. The specs are in there for a very good reason. Nobody called me on this issue over the last three days. So obviously, nobody's too concerned. When you start buying a third more heat for that building than you really need, it's just more taxpayer money. What's the difference?
I have not looked at it myself, but I can tell you that I will, and I will get back to you with an answer.
Okay, appreciate it, Don. I'm sorry it takes us to get some of this driven out of here.
No, it's not true that the water line hasn't been approved, Don.
I know, Wes.
Our committee wanted a fire hydrant over there. We got golf course, golf carts being fueled up inside that buildings with gasoline and stuff, and we felt we oughta have a fire hydrant.
I understand that, but you and I both know.
So you just sat here and said we haven't approved it. Yes, we have.
Okay, it hasn't been completed.
It hasn't been completed.
But did you think about tapping?
There are more pressing right now.
Did you think about tapping into the water line that's live in the golf course? 50 feet behind that building and putting a temporary system in it?
It's not a puddle. We, yes, we did talk about that, but then we're spending more money on it.
You won't be, and I'm talking about, has anybody talked to the developer about continuing use of his building?
Yes, we have. You come here and yell at us like we're.
Who's talked to him?
Best council ever sat.
Me and Craig both talked to him.
When?
Just recently. We're pretty upset with the city. You know, Don, there's a lot of stuff that you don't know. You think you know everything that goes on in, let's say, Hot Springs, and you think you know it, but you don't. Yeah, you know, Don.
You got, you got a guy that's not real happy out there that wants to know why the buildings aren't gone.
Well, we did too.
I've asked that question myself many a times, Don, and I can't get a straight answer, so maybe you can.
But we tried, we had to have this big push for this building, and we're still not in it.
I agree. I agree.
We haven't done anything about wastewater over there yet, have we?
It's going to bid.
We talked about it last fall.
All right, I will get back to you, Don. Thanks. Last item that's on the agenda for communication with the public is Mark. Mark Hatch.
And this is the, I'm on the internet, it's interesting, about Green Court saying that the local government's gonna have to shake down people on the ground. If you guys, I sit in the hospital, it's two months, so you haven't filed evidence coming in, throw a subpoena on my bed. They're trying to, they want to get rich, get me off that property. Yeah, I heard what you said, Bobby. Send similar things to the next auto body, get that old brick building up there. There's a lot up there, I'm pressed now, and you guys have been trying this out for years because you guys have not allowed it to develop. I've been trying to keep that house fixed up there. I have not enough joy, I think, for two months, I've been sitting in the hospital trying to get my foot healed up. I'm getting a little bit tired of your harassment up there. City's harassment, I should say. So much similar to what you've been doing with those ordinances, people are complaining about here. Taking people's rights away.
So do you have a particular question tonight? Or just expressing your opinion about how we've handled this?
Well, you guys wanted me to give you my response to that subpoena. Give me my response. Go to hell. I've got a guy who says he will help me fix, finish fixing the roof on that building. I have to get a hold of him. So I don't need you guys coming up there and harassing me. I don't need people come.
Just make sure that whatever you do, you also handle according to the paperwork, because we've gotta follow the rules that are in there by the laws too. So whatever, whatever the paperwork says, whatever someone says, that's what you've gotta abide by. We do our part, and then it goes to the legal system. And that's pretty much the way the laws say that has to work. So just make sure you follow that part, Mark.
No way over there, but I, the guy who said that you want to start a petition, you're gonna need one of those, and I'll sign it for that on that ordinance. I don't, I'm not in Ward One, so I can't vote for it, so.
Well, we could. Get new councilmen next year. We could even get new councilmen heading in there.
I'm not a Christian, being a politician.
Okay, just keep in mind that whatever the paperwork says is what you've gotta do. And I haven't read it myself, lawyers, and it gets in the legal system, but that's, that's important to take a look at that and make sure to follow that. But just a verbal answer, the honest, reasonable response.
I'll have to, you know, lawyer paid him to have him look at it and see what, look at it for me and see what to, you know, listen. I don't really have to mind the vote over there.
I guess I don't know what to say about that. Okay, Mark. Any other communications from the public this evening?
Why are you guys paying, why did you guys hire Chrissy Altman?
He was there down there before we bought the plunge, and he stayed on. Same as everybody that was down there stayed on.
I know, first one.
We have not made a review of the personnel down there and made any changes to what was in place on the border. That's the deal we gave these employees before we bought it. As a little wait, after the music season is over, we can evaluate everything, look at all the wages and all the people that work down there. At that point, we'll make decisions for the future.
We only have three full-time people at the plunge. Everybody else is done by the end of September, just like they were when they were hired by the old plunge owners back in April.
Any other communication from the public?
Frackers has been paying me, you guys have bought the plunge at all. There's so much work that needs to be done. You guys should have investigated it more.
But the public voted to have that, so it was a public vote that said that the city would buy that.
I know, but I voted with the rat hole. But so much money in there, and the city doesn't have enough money to, if they don't have, you guys don't have enough money.
Great, thanks. Bobby, did you have something else?
On the note of the plunge, just with you guys talking with your, your bill-paying stuff. Instead of buying cleaning products and that off the shelf, why are they not doing what they used to do years ago and buy it from a supply company?
I can't answer that whole question right now. Would they do buy some from the wholesale?
That was on, the soap, the paper towel, the toilet paper, all that stuff used to be dropped off, delivered, and it's a lot cheaper.
A lot of it still is. A lot of it still is, but a big bill or two from some of those suppliers this time. And they have a grocery wholesaler that stopped into, but not here. They can be bought from them. Any other communication from the public? Now I'll continue on personnel. There's one item I have to mention under the second item, golf course. Kyle Peck quit right after we made up the agenda, so he's got a quit date of August the 15th. That should be on there, it will be in the minutes. New business. Luke Doyle and some guys are here, people here, I'm sorry. We have some people here. Pete Lane, explain a little bit, ask questions about contracts. Make sure that they understand and we understand what we're having.
Great, well, thank you for the time. And I don't mean to turn my back to everyone, but it's a, the last time we were here, we were, we talked about what our plan for mining the airport property would be. And there was a lot of discussion about, you know, what it would look like and how this process would work. At the time, we were in the process of evaluating the property and getting, having a hydrology study done. I apologize for the length of time it's taken, but to get the hydrology study done and really look at the undulating formation underneath the sand and gravel on the airport property, just taking quite a bit of time to put together a mine plan as well as a reclamation plan. So just, as we told you last time we was here, we tried to keep you up to speed. All this is in an effort to meet with the FAA and get the final approval through the FAA and draft a contract with the city. But just to kind of give you an idea of what, of what we're, what we're looking at, this is, this would be the top soil on top of the, on the property as it is today. This, this material here, or this depiction here would depict the overburden. And then, once this material is, is removed, the top soil is removed, the overburden is removed, and then it would expose the sand. What our plans are with, because the FAA refuses to allow any standing water, the hydrology study determined what the exposed water depth was. So in order to be able to extract this and eliminate any exposed water, we're gonna have to leave two to three feet of sand on top of the exposed water, on top of the water table, in order to be able to extract it. Once the material is, is taken out, gone through the wash plant, separated the concrete sand from the rock, the sand, the unusable material, that material then will be put back on top of this, on top of the water table. The, after that, the overburden will be put on top of it, and then it'll be reseated. The, the, just kind of a, a little bit of a 3D view, kind of looking at how this process would work. You'd see here the undisturbed piece. You'd see the reclaimed piece. You'd see the piece here that would be, would be in the process of being extracted. This would be the floor, the pit. But the, the real piece of this is, and this was the piece that, that received a lot of attention last time. I know this is pretty small, so it might be difficult for some of you to see it. But what we did was, we went through and looked at, it's about 149 acres in total between the south piece and the north piece. We went through and looked at it, and after doing the hydrology study and looking at, how would this be extracted? And we broke this up in, in, basically in cells, starting at the, at the north end, moving south on this piece. And each one of these lines depict one year of, of processing. It would be, in, in, one of these areas is anywhere depending, depending on where it's at in this process, it's somewhere between four and six acres. So here you would have anywhere from three of these cells disturbed at any one time. So the top soil would be removed, the overburden would be removed, the top soil would be stored to the side of the property. The sand then would be extracted, the overburden would go back in, the top soil would be put back on it, and this would be concurrent. So at any one time, you would have three of these cells disturbed, and we would be marching south down through the property. This, the south piece, based on current use, the south piece would be about 16, it would be out of service for about 16 years, or three cells at a time would be out of service. All the rest of the material would be, the land would be in service. So the south piece would take about 16 years, and the north piece would take about 15 years to, to complete. So somewhere between 28 and 32 years is what we would anticipate to extract the sand based on current market conditions. So the, the, the water, the current water that is, it goes on to the property, that is, what do you call it?
Provisional.
Provisional water. Yeah, that provisional water would have to be relocated. This water right now, the ditch that goes in actually feeds the, the, Pete Lane and Sun's property at the end, that's the end use on the property. We still don't have a, a determination as to what, if we can take that provisional water out of service, and if so, for what length of time. Once we get a final answer on that, we'll make, we'll make whatever changes we need to make in order to our mining plan to ensure that, that, that provisional water is not at risk. The, the property will continue to be farmed as it is today. Anything that's not in, that's not being mined and reclaimed will be in service. And like our original proposal was, we would have the, this, we would continue to manage the hay, continue to manage the farming, and make sure that the, the proceeds comes back to the city. Again, the complexity of this really is the FAA's determination that we could have no standing water in this process. So it took a lot of time in order to make sure that we can mine this in a means that would eliminate standing water. Any questions?
How deep is that one that you have, the underneath the layer where you're gonna remove the sand?
The first board.
The first board that you have.
Well, each, each one of these is different, so it'll be anywhere from 13 to 18 feet is what, is what, is what this will be, you know, from where it is now to where it'll end up, it'll be anywhere depending on, because each one of these, because of the, this shale surface here, this shale surface here is not even. This thing is undulating going up and down. So, and that's what really makes it difficult in this process. This is really a, you know, a clear and easy look at it. But you'll see on each one of these cells, the, the difference in the width, each one of these is between four and six acres. But at each one of these locations, the depth of the sand is significantly different. At the end of the day, you know, the, the slopes will be on three or one slope. The, the whole topographical area will be dropped about 13 to 15 feet. It'll be sloped back in, but then the, when we grade this out, the, the ability to be able to use the water, the provisional water back on this in order to irrigate, will be much easier at the end of the day.
Joel, some of the city council was worried earlier, I guess worried is a good word, but they were concerned that this might be a 50 or 60 or 80-year project. You said it might be like 28 to 32 years. Can we get something, the final contract, just saying there is a final ending date period?
Absolutely. Absolutely, the, when, you know, when we first looked at this, you know, we thought that the, you know, the best means in order to be able to extract the, the sand and, and meet the FAA rules and regulations was to be able to pump the water and not allow water to stand. Once we did the hydrology study and we realized that because of the, the topography, the underground topography of the shale basin is so erratic, the water actually doesn't flow the way we thought it flowed. We thought the water flowed back to the river. The, the water really close to the east, it ultimately gets back to the river, but not on this property. So the whole mining plan had to change dramatically. And so that's the reason we decided we'll go down to, to, you know, two to three feet above the, the groundwater, and we'll just call it quits right there. So now it's much easier for us to say, hey, this is gonna be 28 to 32 years, and we can just cap it.
Okay.
I want to be honest, I, that hay ground, all that stuff, it's gotta come out of the proposal for me to ever even consider. I mean, the only thing that I think we should even be talking about is that property outside that fence.
That's what we're talking about.
And that's, well, you guys were saying something about the farming and the haying. At this point, there's really no reason for you guys to have anything to do with the haying. The city can control it on our end. We can hire someone again. That's inside the fence. That's, that's immaterial to what you're doing. So I, for me, that's all gotta be taken out. You know, the way that thing was wrote up, I understand we only had one kind of description. There was 570-some acres, whatever. We gotta break that out. It's gotta be separate. It's just gonna be a nice, clean deal where it talks about the property you're actually proposing mining aggregate. I mean, that's nothing more. Because I, I don't, there's an old mine close to the highway that's on the shoot, the trap club is actually setting on that property. I mean, all that stuff there, all that, it just needs to remain under the city's control forever. That's, there shouldn't be anything further done with that. I mean, that's, that's just one of my concerns, I mean.
In our proposal, Wes, when the RFP...
In, in our proposal, Wes, when the RFP originally came out, it was five hundred and seventeen acres.
Hey, I know, I realize that, that's...
But our proposal only, only addressed a hundred and forty-nine acres. So, we're not talking about anything within the high fence. We, as a, as a, as, as an assistant to the city, you know, we, we took on doing the haying inside. Matter of fact, I have equipment in there right now, mowing and, and bailing that at no cost to the city.
Well, it's become a fiasco, the guy you had in there, I mean, yeah. We don't want to bend that, that...
We, we got it, we're doing it ourselves now.
But, you know, that's certainly up to the city, whatever the city chooses. You know, we were just, we offered our assistance, this, we all know that this year turned out a lot different than it started. This year started off, you know, with, with a drought, everybody anticipating there would be no water, there'd be no water, uh, uh, you know, on the, on that five hundred and seventeen acres. Things have changed dramatically. People who, the people who gambled, won big on this one. That's pretty unusual, so...
How deep is the water being through there?
Well, in, in some places...
It varies or...
Excuse me?
It varies.
It, it varies. The, that, that's, the, the shale bottom that the water runs on is just like, kind of like the Black Hills, it's just kind of all over the place. There's some really deep valleys and some really, really steep, you know, pieces. What we went through is, and we don't know that we found every single one of them, but we think we, 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 after we modeled it, we think we, we pretty well know what it is. We may have to adjust our mining plan up, I don't think we'll be adjusting it down. But there may be less, we may be in there, you know, less time than you think. It just kind of depends on what we find and we start mining, so...
My one concern with the entire project, you know, putting out the R, RFPs where they, was that they may be looking at a hundred-year project and I don't, I would like to see this capped at forty.
Okay.
That's my concern.
I think you'll cap it at forty.
Forty's fine with me.
That's too long.
That longer's better. We're probably being there shorter, but, you know, sorry.
The less time, the better.
Any other questions from the council?
My concern's a lawsuit we have. I think we ought to table this until that lawsuit's over. But, Carl.
Our attorney has advised us that we could go ahead, so... We have two opinions here.
Our attorney also advised us to go forward with this, that the, the lawsuit has no merit, so... The city council did their job, uh, within the guidelines of the city, so the lawsuit takes nothing.
Well, I just don't know how many lawsuits we've been involved with in the last couple of years. It, it does, it, it does bother me. I, I kind of agree with Craig, I think until we get something hammered out for sure, that we might need to slow down and figure something out. I, I don't know, I, our city attorney, I was told was gonna be here tonight, but I guess I was told wrong, so...
Has, has this basically come down to the east side of the airport runway property now? The mining? The whole RFP was in the whole thing, but you take that, that big high fence?
The north, the north and the south piece.
Right, but I mean, you're not doing anything on the...
Right, looking, looking south, this is south, this is rural road.
Right, but it takes in all this?
No, yeah, this piece, this piece.
Right, you're not doing anything over there?
No, no.
Yeah, that's what Wes was talking about, the old mine area, anything over there on?
No, no.
The two pieces between the grass, the grass runway splits the project, basically.
Right, exactly, yeah. Everything outside the high fence, nothing which is a hundred and forty-nine acres, I can't tell.
Any other questions, Joel?
We'll take you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Simmons Property Hutbrook lots, is that yours, Craig?
That's me.
Okay.
The south side of the road up Hutbrook, that we had surveyed. I think we need to sell it to purchase the railroad right away that splits our land on the other side of the road. That we don't own.
How much land are we talking about?
Is there six acres on the south side of the road?
I think it's three and a half acres totals, you know. Two lots is what it was plotted into and it's the, as you're driving out the Hutbrook and just get even with the, with the hump house and the stuff, the land going up the hill.
There's only like one, maybe two building lots on it if that...
Yeah, we added two building lots on it.
And that railroad right away consists of the whole side of our property on the west side of the north side of the road.
How wide is it? Twenty foot?
Fifty foot.
Fifty?
Fifty foot by the whole length of, which is...
They were, the, the owners of the property was gonna get us a plot of what that looked like and we don't have the, the distance yet.
Who owns the railroad property now?
It belongs to, uh, Jennings, Chuck Jennings.
Bye.
Uh, Jennings.
I guess I just thought when they abandoned, they went back to...
It was supposed to, but the city and that, with them back then, they, they don't, they sold it to Evergillis.
Is he growing this out?
Yes. So, our, our next step would be to get that appraised and then decide how you wanna sell this other stuff if that's what you're gonna go with, whether it's sealed bid or, or set a time for an auction.
The stuff on the north side don't really, you know, have anything to do with that property. I mean, it belongs to them, but it's on the opposite side of the road, you know.
We'd have a property...
We'd have to keep an easement because of water main roads though.
We've got other properties here in town that we shouldn't get sold at the same time, however we do it, either auction or sealed.
Yeah, we've been pushing for two years.
We've been talking about this for a long time.
Which is the best way, sealed bid or auction?
I think auction would be, but I don't know.
When they move that road, it's just something to consider, but when they move that road and widen that corner out there by the Hutbrook property, there was a great concern in doing that and increasing any runoff down toward your box, your wet wells down there at that spring, so this is, this could potentially affect that if you put housing lots up there. I just know it was a big deal when the county wanted to do that road at the time and the city was, I don't know what the hydrology that would be, but you're basically taking water out of those basements down there and pumping it to town.
Okay. We'll keep working on those lots.
I want to make a motion, we sell this.
Okay, well, we, I guess we could take a motion, we gotta do some steps before we gotta appraise it.
I thought we already had that done when we had it surveyed.
Oh, we haven't had that appraised, we've had other property appraised, remember those two lots out there?
How long are appraisals good for? How long are appraisals good for?
Can't tell you that right now.
The, the city's appraisal process is for the mayor or the city to appoint three property owners of the city and they give what they think the value of it is and you try to pick somebody that has some knowledge in, in real estate value to do that.
But, that doesn't answer my question. How long is that appraisal good for? I mean, if you did it two years ago... Okay.
If, if you sell it public auction, appraisal has a viewed issue. You just have to have that appraisal to put it into the notice that sets a beginning value. But an appraisal, the, the property can be sold for ninety percent of whatever it's appraised for as a starting point. So, if you go public auction, it can go to whatever it's...
So, if you had it appraised ten years ago?
Uh, that, that, these are only a year and a half.
Well, I know, but, you know.
I wouldn't think it'd make good ten years, you know. I'll take that back until we give it appraised.
Okay.
As long as we appraise it within the next two years.
Two years, okay, I got a long time.
No, we have to get it sooner than I can buy it and then we're possible.
Leave yourself open there.
Maybe we just need to buy the property over there first and get it secured.
What does he want for the property over there?
Me? Go ahead, Harley.
We, we are to get an appraisal of that property and we've got the local realtor going to, one of the local realtors, to, to get a price put together based on similar property in the area. Then we'll take it to them and if it's acceptable, it'll come to the city board for approval.
Okay. So, that's in the works?
It's in the process, yes.
Till they happen?
We got a budget of two days.
We do not call him? Took two years for you to call Bud. It ain't gonna take two years for you to call the realtor, is it?
Takes two years for the appraisal.
Take two years for the realtor to go.
I'll give him an appraisal. Next item on our new business is to authorize a purchase of a street paint machine for fifty-five hundred dollars. Is that money in the street budget, Harley, for equipment or a bay?
We, we took a close look at that today and there, there is a new industry budget for that purchase. They've got a couple other things that they were looking at that this became more of a priority for them. So, we guess it's in the budget. I mean, we didn't specifically budget for it, but we do have some room in the budget to purchase this.
I make a motion, we purchase it.
Motion to second purchase, discussion or questions?
How much was it to fix the old one?
Thirty-five hundred.
Some warranty on this one?
This is a brand-new machine, so I guess I didn't ask for warranty. No. It's under the limit.
If you tell this person, tell them it's fine.
They've been piecemealing this thing together for years to keep it running.
We do have a lot of paint that needs done with crosswalks and stripes.
A lot of paint brushes for fifty-five hundred.
We got a motion, a second to approve the purchase, more discussion, questions? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed no? And we need to set a bid opening for Almond Street, that would be some street work, some drainage work. Like to set that for October the third.
Come on over.
A motion, a second to have a bid opening October the third, uh, at noon. The part of the motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't know that, I don't remember the time, I think it was three in the afternoon is what Tracy had to notice.
Was it for, alright, let's make it three o'clock. That's okay, Carl.
That's okay.
It's okay, me too, bro.
Is this also including the, the other street? Or we got our spots we need to fix?
It's the no-name street that's talked about above where all the drainage issues were off of Almond and we, we did have some right-of-way issues that we're gonna have to work through and have some plating done by Anderson surveyed and...
Did this, did this include the pans and stuff too that included?
It included, I believe, fourteen pans throughout the city in the various spots where we've got some really bad...
And that drainage and system.
Six street drainage with the storm catch drop inlet, whatever. On that, so it's a bunch of concrete work that were all small ones around that we've lumped all together.
So, that's part of the list we've been talking about for as well.
Yeah. We really should clarify that for...
You need to look at more of that in this, you're gonna do all that in that motion. Cause that just says all, all...
Well, the bidders will have a packet that tells them what's the bidding.
At least we know what we're voting on, right?
Oh, I guess I thought everybody knew that it included all that.
Well, don't say that.
Did it include all that?
It does?
I'm happy to hear it.
Kim Craig sent it approved.
Any other discussion or questions? A motion, a second to set the bid opening date for the Almond Street project and other projects, mostly concrete work around town for October the third at three PM. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed no? Uh, special assessment project on the back nine streets out there, we need a motion to set a hearing September the sixteenth at the city council meeting and set an interest rate at, uh, I would propose six percent on these for the assessment district.
Come on over.
A motion, a second. The last three assessment districts we've done were all at seven percent. Been interested down a little bit now and we're figuring to give a little bit of break if the city council wants to go to that six percent. That's something that's up to the council to set. There's about forty-five lots out there, or there are forty-five lots out there and right now the cost that will be assessed will be eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-three cents per lot, plus any interest if they don't pay in advance, pay in late. So, I have a motion, a second, any discussion or questions?
Did we figure out, we're gonna go with the label went to the screen, is that?
This is...
This is the...
So, this is Kel?
This is the one that was done last year that we went to bid and it was originally proposed when the first preliminary assessment rule resolution was passed to be around sixteen thousand, a little over sixteen thousand per lot, so it came in a lot more reasonable.
Did the streets get fixed out there? Were there concrete issues?
Street has not been...
We're, we're holding a, a retainage from Hill's material and they are arguing the fact that it's not a problem at this point, so we need to have a sit-down with probably Public Works, the engineering, have a chat with Hill's material.
Shouldn't we do that before we finalize this thing?
No, cause we, we know what the final rate is gonna be. If, if they don't fix it, we'll use what we retain to go in and fix theirselves or another contractor to go in and do that.
And we've got a warranty period on it, so it's no loss and no, no difference if something failed six months from now.
We're gonna be out of warranty by the time this gets done, I can guarantee that.
Any other discussion or questions? A motion, a second to approve the, uh, hearing date, September sixteenth at seven fifteen at the council meeting with an interest rate of six percent. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed no? And committee reports, Carl, would you have one?
No, we didn't have a meeting, but we're having a meeting this Wednesday.
Okay.
Before budget meeting?
Okay, Public Works, Dwight, do you have anything else?
Yeah, uh, Johnson's control is gonna be changing now approximately sixty meters in town. And the meters that will be getting changed out, people should be getting notices in the mail and there will be a notice going in the paper too to all the customers that, uh, what color uniforms they'll be wearing, what they're doing and that the water will be shut off for, for a while, so...
Try to take out a little bit of heat out of each one or is there a certain section that we're starting?
Uh, he wasn't there at the meeting, so I don't know. I was just passing on the information, so...
There's a list of the meters that they're planning to change out, if you need to take a look at it, we've got all the addresses.
I was just wondering, cause they never answered that one question of how they were, are they gonna go by somebody on the east side of town, west side of town, how they were gonna dip that up, that sixty, uh, originally it was dip.
It was based on all of the meter usage for the last two years that we submitted to them and they picked their percentage of meters based on what we put out there for usage information on all of the meters. In addition to the sixty-six residential meters, there are an additional twenty large-size meters that would be, you know, businesses or... And if the purpose is to pull them out, see how accurate the meter is actually recording the water usage and the concern on the larger meters that if they're too large, the water will go through them without even turning the, the meter and registering. So, what kind of water loss and revenue, I mean, this is what the justice...
Are we looking at Evans, the Evans Hotel and the Brookside on one of these?
I'd have to look at the list.
I don't know on that one yet, Carl.
I knew that, at one point in time, at one point in time, wasn't one of the meters broke in either one of those places?
Well, we got the hotel.
And we fixed it and it plugged up with sediment and, uh, they got an iron pipe coming in. So, they're, they need to install a screen to catch the sediment before it goes through the meter. Know where that stands.
They said they was gonna fix it when the new line goes through town.
When the new line goes through town?
Well, the strays.
The new highway.
Oh, the new highway.
That way we get those completely new lines in that system. And I think Tim came up with an idea for the, they're having trouble figuring out how to... And I think Tim came up with an idea for the, they're having trouble figuring out what the standard.
I'll have to let you get a checkup with the, um, they get a different, there's a different type of meter. Actually comes with a screen on it, but I think the way that's configured down there, they can just jock stuff back a little ways, they had a filter right in front of it, just a screen filter with a plug drain in it. Just wanna keep the stuff moving in the meter, but they're the ones that'll be crying if the plug's up now, because it more affects us, the meter will stop, and it's stopped because they, they water.
So you have sixty meters, household meters, and then twenty basically like a three-inch.
Yep, large skip or large-size meters, yeah.
We talked about the lift station replacement at the sewer plant, and, uh, we're looking at a used one that was installed that was, that might work, we're not sure yet.
Yeah, you're talking about a what now?
Lift station, a new lift station at the sewer plant.
I thought everything was working pretty good over there at the sewer plant.
I think the main bulk of the plant is working good, but the lift station is getting old and deteriorating. We have some issues with it now. It's not a huge dollar item. We're looking at possibly purchasing a used one if we can retrofit it into work. The pumps are big enough, we just don't know if we can retrofit it into the current holding tank to make it work better now. Hydrant leak and, and manhole problem on Sixth Street. The manhole has been fixed by the contractor, and we're still waiting on the hydrant to be fixed. And the consensus was the city fix it, build the contractor, unless the contractor gets on the ball and gets it done.
Okay. Thanks, Roy. Public Safety, Craig?
We had a constituent come to our meeting on the weed ordinance, and we explained to her about the weed ordinance, and she's happy and went. We talked about, we have a problem with the fireworks and, uh, and what the guy wanted didn't look like something the city wanted to do. He wanted everything in one big group, and that looked more dangerous than what we, what we do now, so we're gonna send a letter and tell it. The curfew, I guess we're gonna leave it the way it is. We talked about the curfew. Talked about leash laws and stuff, and we're gonna keep up on the leash laws. Tasers, we talked about that, and evidently they have to have training. Bob hasn't set that up yet. He's been on vacation for a couple weeks at Valley, maybe he'll do it now, he's back. Then we talked about street green on, on Sixth Street, and it's been, it's being addressed. If it's next thing over, that Almond Street project, that's one of the things that they're addressing. That's it, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. Cultural Recreation, Wes?
Yeah, we talked about the divorced-out road, one of the book barn up to library. Scott come talk to us about this comprehensive plan with the parks and planning, um, and the flood plain and the greenway. And the dog park at the end of the greenway and flood plain, I guess, kinda, apparently you guys have been talking about this for years, but, uh, I guess we kinda talked about that. And the soccer field out here, the parking. And then I guess we kinda briefly talked about maybe, uh, like a summer rec board, and then here there are like a parks board, and then having a summer rec, I guess, position in there somehow, because we're gonna have to address that here probably next spring.
Parks committee?
Well, already have a parks committee, I mean, and then have a summer recs, you know, person in, into that parks committee, because come spring, I guess we're gonna figure something out.
Okay.
We talked about the weed spraying again. And at this point, I, I think we're just, we're just gonna hire done. I mean, apparently we have no incompetent to do it, so at this point, I don't see any other course of action, or hire someone.
Or contract it out?
Or that's, that's what I mean, hired, hired, contracted out.
Did I see Steve DeBoer spraying weeds at Kittensburg?
He's been doing some for us. I don't know what he's doing at this point, but he, he was doing some along with parks and the river and.
He don't do lawns and stuff though, does he? He quit doing mine. He said, he told me he don't do lawns.
He's been doing the larger ones, you know, like parks and, I mean, if you consider those lawns. Library.
I guess come by and tell them, we just want to figure out what we wanna do.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, and Thursday.
Those pods that they have up at, I guess, their pods at the library, they're just full of weed. Nobody takes care of them.
And Cindy and I talked about that this morning as we were, for you and your budget for tomorrow's meetings.
So we think they need sprayed.
Yes, we do.
In the past, we thought about taking them out, planting grass there.
I think they're.
I think they look nice.
They look nice. I mean, I don't know why you'd take them out. I mean, they spent a lot of money putting those features in. I mean, all it takes is someone to spray them. I mean, it's not. And we know if we have our guys take them out, there's gonna be a bald spot with weeds rolling back through it, so.
Okay. Is, is there something special on the Southern Hills Drag Race Association Cruise Night?
They, they would like to use the parks for their annual car show and cruise night. I think they put a date on there.
September sixth and seventh?
Yeah, I guess so. To do this legally, I guess they have to get our permission and.
Well, we just give that permission, write a city hall, they'll talk to Mary. We can, we can talk to Mary down there and make sure that it isn't already scheduled.
They, they've already scheduled it at the city hall.
Okay, all right. Guess that's done then. Okay, thanks, Wes. Arlie?
Uh, just a couple informational items. Uh, any of the council people that wanna take in the South Dakota Municipal League Annual Conference, October eighth through the eleventh, it's in Aberdeen this year. Please see me for details, and I think we have to get notice in by the middle of September, I think, like the twelfth, I think is the deadline. I might be off on that date, but if you're interested in attending the conference, let me know, and we'll get rooms arranged, et cetera, if you're planning to make the trek up to Aberdeen. Uh, also, just a reminder for the public, Wednesday, three P M, Plunge Board has been meeting every week on Wednesdays. They'll continue through August doing that, uh, but starting in September, they will be in the, be doing the first and third Wednesdays only for, uh, the plunge advisory committee. And Planted and Zoning is Wednesday evening at seven P M. Not sure what we're gonna do since we have a budget meeting going on. Are we gonna be done by seven? Stick it in the back room.
We'll, we'll stick Planted and Zoning in the back room, I guess.
Start clean though.
All right, that's everything. I have budgets. We've been hearing all night, starting at five-thirty the next three nights, and we'll see how far we get. We'll schedule some more meetings after that. First reading needs to be the first council meeting in September.
Okay, and I only have one item, one of our lawsuits on the property taxes between the rural and the service, uh, service districts was settled, and we just got notice over the weekend that it was sided with the city. So everything we've done is, hasn't been done correctly, so this is done. Unless they would wanna appeal to the Supreme. I'm sure they will. Who are the combination people, is Rayners, Amundson, Hugh, Hugh, Foles?
Same. The one that came out of the.
Seams go names. Oh, I'm sorry.
Careful.
Thank you.
I don't know, he already read the names out loud.
So, nothing else?
A motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.